Good evening, everyone. It's five thirty. Sarah Kukulay, I'll be covering over the meeting tonight since Mayor Merja is out of town. So with that, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its defense, one nation under God.
Thank you. First thing on our agenda tonight is the continuation of the public hearing regarding our water rate increase. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to address the counsel on the water rate increase? If you could just introduce yourselves.
I'm Russell Johnson. Somewhat new to town. I've been here probably five years, not that, but I understand when there's an increase to deliver supply to people that actually get the supply. I haven't been supplied a single drop of water. Yet every time you guys do an increase, I'm paying more and more per month for nothing, zero. I don't get anything. Because I have a pipe that somebody else ran into my property, you think that you can charge me forty-four eighty-eight a month? And then raise it again. To me, that's stealing when you take my money for nothing. That's theft. I'm tired. I live off social security and I don't need charges for something I don't get.
So you have a well?
Yeah, I own a well.
Okay.
I don't understand it.
Colin, would there be a way around that where he could cap that line?
Yeah, we could definitely cap this, but I mean, I don't.
It's capped. It's not top. It's not connected to my house. There's a meter in the pipe.
But you get a water bill every month?
Correct.
Can you address that? Do you know?
Sure. The way it raises in the in the city code, if you have a line coming into your property, it's in your connected to the main, you pay for the base rate, whether you use that service or not. And usually like for a house, if you already have it, once you connect, you can't disconnect. So the previous owners had a well, but they did add a water line into the house. It's there. It's ready to go for use. But he has chosen not to use that water line and continue to use as well.
So it's hard when it's never been connected. I don't get a drop.
Yeah. So I guess it comes down to, is your well registered with the state?
Yeah.
So you have rights to the water. So in that case, if you wanted to disconnect, you'd have to physically disconnect it from the main and you get charged for that as well.
Well, the people that put the pipe in paid for the pipe. So why is there continuing charts? When they paid to put it in, when they put new water pipes down the road and told people that had to pay for their pipe in there, but it's not used. It's never been used. I don't think the previous owner in front of me, maybe in front of them had it connected to the house. I don't know, but
so.
It's always been well since I owned it and I'm pretty sure with the previous owner before me didn't have it connected.
So basically the base rate that you're paying is for replacement. Say you're, you know, the line fails. You know, your service connection.
I'm not getting used. You can try to explain this crap to me all you want, but it
I mean, that's, that's what.
It's not getting used. I'm getting charged for it. That's not right. How many other people in this town are getting screwed just like me? And probably senior citizens that live on not a whole lot of money. And the city's got to take our money. I paid for the schools with my taxes. I don't have any kids going there.
Can you give me your address? What's your address?
Two oh six Third Avenue, South West.
What's, what would the charge be to this this night?
Oh, we just charged you to, you know, repress that asshole.
Oh, it was thousands when I asked. We might not. You know what they charged them to it?
No, it wouldn't be that.
Oh, it wouldn't be that, no. Is it, are you on payment or grow?
To that address.
Two oh six Third Avenue, South West. It's, I didn't pay much, but it's, they've been chewing it up and putting it back down later. I don't know what he called it.
I'm trying to remember. Didn't they install a backflow preventer because the line is actually connected to the house? I, I thought Steve Howard installed like a backflow preventer because it was actually connected in the house.
I think it's worth taking a look at, and I think it's something that we could probably, probably resolve for you.
Yeah.
I know you're not the only one that's paying for city water when you're not using city water. And if you have that water right for the well that you're using, then do you have city sewer? So the sewer and the garbage should, is a separate charge, correct? I'll follow up. I appreciate you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing on the water rate increase. This increase will make the base rate go from thirty-one eighty-eight to forty-five dollars per EDU. That's an equivalent dwelling unit. And then the bulk rate will charge will go from fifty cents to a dollar per one hundred gallons of water purchased.
That's good. You said it was thirty-one eighty-eight?
Yes, sir.
You didn't charge them.
Your sewer is probably, and garbage is probably part of that bill as well. Yes, sir.
Sewer comes untaxed and the garbage would be part of that.
Okay. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July first.
I move we approve the meeting minutes of our July first meeting.
So, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Josh did, got in there. Moved by Paulie, seconded by Josh. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. All business. Discussion and possible vote on the sheriff contract response. Any comments?
Yes. I've heard from constituents and I really would like to get this resolved sooner rather than later, although I know we're restricted because we can't make an arrangement to pay a sum that we don't know we have. And we need to get a levy in place so we can have a citizen's vote on it. And apparently if it's phrased in a reasonable fashion, I'm sure our can, our city would like to pay for sheriff services. But we don't have that money yet, so it's hard for us to commit for a long range contract. But even for a year, Tom, you said last time we met that there was money, but it would involve sort of squeezing it out of some other budgets in order to have the money to pay.
Correct. So a portion of it, we can shift out of the general fund into the water sewer garbage, street funds. Most of that would be payroll.
Would we ever be able to squeeze it back to those other funds? I mean, I hate to sabotage our city services.
Reality, the payroll that's in the general fund right now probably should be in some of those other funds. Like your guys' salaries come out of the general fund, but really it should be split among all the funds because you deal with all the different parts and pieces. So it was just kind of the way it was done before, but now that we're looking at it, it really, we should be split up, including some of our salaries should be in other departments as well. So that would be a portion of it. That first year, another portion of that increase would probably have to come out of our cash reserves that we have in the general.
But how would we ever build those cash reserves back up again if we borrow them or take them for this one year?
Take a few years. We always have a budget and then usually we come in under budget by so many thousands of dollars. So those get.
Yeah, but not three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's a bit much.
Yeah, but right now the increase in contract price, I think, is a hundred and thirty thousand roughly compared to what we've been paying.
So that's, that's the only differential that will be.
Right. Three hundred and sixteen isn't
Right.
a number we're looking at. We're looking at a number more like one thirty-five.
We've been paying one hundred and eighty-two, which is normal. And then, but the increase to three hundred and sixteen is roughly a hundred and thirty. So we would have to come up with a hundred and thirty thousand between moving some stuff out of the general fund and using our cash reserves for that first year and then.
Right. And during that first year, we would take steps to get a mill levy, a safety levy, whatever you know how to call it.
A levy or a safety district.
I was doing some look into safety districts and the way the state aligns it, we can do it for a lot of things, but law enforcement's not one on the list from what I've seen. Yeah. So we need to talk to.
Heard otherwise, but we.
That's, there were like twenty-seven different things on that list, but we need to look into that farther.
But obviously we have to take that step. We can't just continue to borrow money from other sources because
Yeah.
our streets will deteriorate even faster.
But at the same time, we're still paying those monthly invoices as well. So we have to take that into consideration.
Exactly.
Because the, the cut is going to continue to bleed until we get it figured out.
Correct.
So it's not going to take long to use up a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars with monthly invoices.
Except June was a bonus month. I mean, wow.
Well, it was a bonus month for paying, but there was still a lot of burden on the city employees and for things that weren't getting handled. Because there were calls and there were things that weren't.
I see they were, yeah, called the city.
Right, right. So it wasn't really, it's not, wasn't a win-win for anyone, really.
I still think we ought to hear out the guys that are coming to our next meeting, see what they have to say and kind of take all the information into account.
And this is a meeting that will occur not in August, but in the.
August fifth.
Oh, they're coming to that meeting?
Yes.
Ah.
Anyone else have any comment? Keith, you have anything? So do I have a motion to leave it table? The motion to?
I'm hoping to leave it table.
Do I need a second or a vote? Nope. Leave it on the table?
Yeah.
Has anyone else heard from anyone in the public regarding action to take?
Lot of mixed, back and forth.
Pete?
Oh, go ahead, Pete.
I'm Pete Howard. Was there ever an inquiry made to the attorney general? And if it was, that we were.
There was an inquiry made, but we have not.
Did not what?
We have not heard back from the attorney general.
Have you made a second attempt?
I haven't personally. I don't know.
I don't think it ever was made.
It was made. They got a response in writing that they needed more time.
They asked for more time.
The AG did?
Yes.
He did.
His office just responded to it.
Well, when was that?
It was like April twenty-seventh or something like that, wasn't it?
No.
Several months ago. February or April, we got their response saying that they're looking at it, but most likely need more time to respond longer than the hundred and eighty days that they need to.
Well, what's the opinion going to give you? The law is pretty damn clear. And that's the problem is you guys are breaking the law. I'm sorry, but Paulie, you guys should have been working on this money thing months ago.
Can I, can I ask you what law you think we're breaking?
Seven thirty-two forty-one oh one.
Not having law enforcement?
Correct.
We do have law enforcement. We don't, we've been paying the contract.
You don't have it today. You don't have a written contract.
We have a bill here for June. Are you planning on providing this one for July, Keith?
So Pete, is that law enforcement? Was that a contract? Okay, so, so really truthfully, they are reading the law correctly.
They are paying bills that are being submitted to them so far.
Okay. But is it a police force law enforcement to the law? I mean, to, to what the statute says, are, are we, they, at, are?
According to the statute, they, they, they don't have a law enforcement, a police department. However, they are getting law enforcement services.
Okay.
And so that's through my office.
So the real catch here is then, they're going to have to figure out how to pay for it. And didn't we just, didn't we just see a water enforcement or a water rate increase?
Those two things are not connected.
I understand that, Tom, but you guys need to raise the money. You're going to have to come up with something about it and you've had a long time to do it and you're not done. You're not there. Now we're talking about borrowing money from Peter to pay Paul. What the hell? You're going to have to come to the turret table here and say, how are we paying for this stuff? The taxpayer is going to get jammed up the ass and we have to know, are you going to have a law enforcement thing?
We will have law enforcement, but this isn't something that we can sit here and write a check for. We have to go to the people. The people have to respond to that. We've been working very well together with the sheriff's office and with the community. And we have been in place with law enforcement and everybody's been playing very well together thus far. We'll get there. I know it seems frustrating and there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of public gatherings and a lot of opinions. And opinions are like assholes out there and there's a lot of them and it's getting to the point now where people are getting very tired of hearing it and I'm one of them and we're doing our best. We're doing our very best. And I think Keith as well.
Yeah, well.
Doing his best. He hasn't walked away from us. There's been times, it's been close. We've been feeling pressure from all sides of the table, but we're getting there.
Concern I have, guys, is that it's not for me. I haven't got many days left. But it's for the little ward girls and the Skinner kids.
Well, the concerns you have are the concerns we all have.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that, Sarah. But the thing of it is, is that according to the law, I don't think what we are at par. Yet you're getting services, but we're not getting, I think, what the law tells you you're supposed to do. And I'm just really upset that it's taken this damn long.
We all are.
Well, let's get it done. Let's decide we're going to, we're going to have a contract or we're going to have a police department. What is it going to be?
We're getting there.
And that's what we're working on. We're, we're trying to find the best avenues to give people the best services for the dollar. I've got another opinion that might stink, but I think law enforcement's, you know, an increase for law enforcement is probably more important than an increase for water. But the water's going to keep flowing. The people get injured, hurt, killed. Who knows what? Yeah, I can tell you feel that. Is, is the levy increase city line or county line?
City.
Pete?
And then another group that will come in August. Who are they?
They're a private security firm, Attic Gray Falls.
And I think we should talk to your city attorney.
Yeah.
And maybe others.
If they don't cite the county, they don't.
I don't think a private authority can be brought in here because they don't have the power of arrest.
That's right. They do under municipal code.
Where did you find that?
It's.
I don't think, I do not think so. You don't know my background. I don't know yours. I was sheriff fourteen years. I think you are wrong.
If you find it, let me know.
Because you show your jury line.
We'll get there.
Josh, the statute says unless they reside in the county, they can't be a law enforcement.
In the municipal.
In the state statute.
When we're done, show me that because I, I'm trying to gather everything I can gather. So if you can find it, give it to me.
Okay, we have a motion. We're going to just keep.
We haven't had the chance to talk to them. That's why they're coming in or to talk to us. And it's one of those things, if we don't investigate every option we have, it's nothing you do, guys.
I got you. That's, that's the revenue.
But we got to look at it.
Next order of business or the first order of business?
But I thought we were having a meeting with, with Paula and Keith and Stuart and the, one of the county commissioners to talk about the contract. When does that occur?
That, I think that Stewart's vision, Mayor Merga's position on that was that that happens after we've had an opportunity to speak with this.
That's exactly the meeting I was interested in because Paula, she knowledge about.
Yep.
Money.
And you'll want to remember to have a arbiter there of some sort to guide that conversation, which should be.
For new business, the first item on our agenda is discussion on the election for evoking a vacated council seat. So in our packet, there's a response from the clerk and recorder's office regarding elections and how this is all going to play out. We have the August sixth deadline for write-in candidate, candidates. So it's as clear as mud. We have until August fifteenth, is that correct? To fill Heather's position that she resigned from. Tonight's her last meeting. So we have thirty days from her last meeting to fill her seat. So we're, right now are waiting for that August sixth write-in deadline to pass. And then we will appoint if necessary after that. Does anybody have any questions? Regarding that?
Well, does that comply with Sarah's leave notice?
Yes.
You would be filing as a writing candidate.
No, maybe file.
As a candidate.
As a candidate.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
But we're using the same deadline as the write-in deadline.
Right. And it's a special election, special, the special filing period. All right.
Sorry, special filing period, not special election.
Right. And not right.
Yes.
There could be writing keep in file, but
Correct.
This is separate thing specifically for this seat.
Thank you for that. So August sixth is our deadline. Anybody out there or in this room that's in that ward? We're waiting for you. Come on down. Vote. The next item we have is our vote on resolution number nine forty for the water rate increase. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution nine forty.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution number nine forty on the water rate increase. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
You know, it is easy to, and I sympathize with those who may be paying the rate and not using the water. That's a real fact of life, especially if you're on a fixed income. But what we have to remember is that diligence was not done in the generations prior to this to maintain the water and sewer systems of this town. As a result, and we're not alone in all of Montana, the infrastructure is crumbling. It is leaking at rates that sometimes have compromised our ability to keep up. And so we have received grants from the federal government in many different phases. We have about ten different funding sources to replace and install water lines for perpetuity, not just for our time, but for all the time of this community. One day we'll all be gone and this community still needs to move on with clean, healthy water supply, available for development, available for modeling. And so while it might be a pinch here and there for people, remember this is for all time so that we don't have these massive infrastructure projects to then come back and fund at the cost of over, in one phase, eight million dollars. That's, that's an amount we don't have. So we only pay a fraction of that, what fifteen percent of it roughly in that neighborhood. So under twenty percent we bear as our own. And how we help bear that cost is we increase our water rates to help bear the maintenance moving forward to show the diligence on the system that has essentially been given to us by those who don't even reside here, taxpayers across the country. And so when I support this, it's not because I'm like, oh yeah, let's stick it to people. It's like, you know, as a young person, I was very frustrated that my infrastructure in my home community was allowed to crumble. And so I see this as a step in diligence for generations henceforth, not just for now.
Go ahead.
Bobby. This is Bobby.
I'm sorry.
If you can bear with me, this is a, they said any question not asked is a dumb question. So Heather, what you said about we didn't take steps to, so was it preventable? What should have been done or could have been done to, so they say if it's not fixed, don't break it. So what could have been done? What wasn't done? And now that it's infrastructure, I'm a dummy, but I know this whole nation infrastructure is I work for the gas company, my husband and I, utility, natural gas. So we're familiar with replacing pipes, you know, upgrading, you know. So that is my question. What wasn't done? What year? Do you know how far back? It's like now, I mean,
I think.
Who could have afforded it then, you know?
Our city foreman is best.
I mean.
Yeah, let's say Lauren. I have to address that one.
City water is put in in nineteen sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
One six.
And nothing has been done with it. So we're seeing, we're seeing what, what results today. Old curb stops that haven't worked in decades. They haven't even been seen in decades. I'm still digging up valves in the middle of the street that are buried under a foot of asphalt. And nobody's seen it for nobody in this room seen it. So that's where it's frustrating for us as well. Like when we go to turn off a section of town, we can't because the valves don't work. You know, we've responded to an emergency. We got to kill half the town just to remedy that. So that hasn't been done. The valves are supposed to be exercised every year, minimum. You know, just stuff like that that just hasn't been done. And so now we're catching up and it's tough. Electrolysis in the ground, it's a real thing. And until you dig it up and sorry for you, sir, but you know, just that unused service is deteriorating in the ground because of electrolysis. There are other metals in the ground that interfere. It prematurely eats it away and it will, it will fail. Any hole in our, in our infrastructure is a failed one. It's, you're only as strong as the weakest link. So that's what hasn't been done and we're playing catch-up. And.
I thought the plans that I saw where they put this pipe, they charged me forty-one dollars a month for shown where they put new pipe down the road and into my house. And that, that's why they were charging everybody for the actual pipe to go to their property when they were putting in the new pipe. So I don't believe you when you say nothing has been done here and, and
So.
and why hasn't nothing been done here? And also this, this year, all of a sudden, it's got to be done.
So some of these projects, we have replaced the main line in the street. Existing service lines that were put in in nineteen sixteen are still there. They just took a piece of copper connected to your service line, didn't fix the curb stop, but the main line in the street is good. So our main problem now, in my own personal opinion, and I've fixed probably seven of these in the last four months is service lines. They're over a hundred years old, hooked to a new main. Doesn't do us any good because we're still digging up our streets, still digging up our sidewalks, curb stops aren't working. You know, vice versa, you know, all the, all the above. Yes, our ordinance says that you own all the way to the main, which is, you know, ordinance, but in some of these new projects that we are doing, in order to fix the streets correctly, we are fixing all the way to the curb stop. Doesn't make sense. We need to get out of the street, at least get to the edge where the city owns and fix it to there. Something that we should look at as a group, we should change the ordinance that the city owns to the curb stop, which makes sense. It's on our property. We can shut it off at any given time, which makes sense in my own mind. So that's kind of where the direction we're heading. But you know, we sent out the, the survey and what was the no one complaint in town is our streets are terrible. Well, we can't fix the streets if everybody's service line and the whole block that was put in in nineteen sixteen. Why would we fix that street when all the service signs are over a hundred years old?
I'm sorry. Early noon.
And so Russell, yours would have been, I'm just looking at your address, would have been fifteen, fifteen or twenty years ago, there was the first, first phase of the water when they put the. The first first phase of the water, when they put the water through Shoto Original, and I'm thinking at two oh six down this way. That would have been part of that. Though there's been phases before this current one that have gone, and just as money is available again. Where we're granted, the bulk of the project is given to us and we just have to come up with our portion, so.
And like Colin said, that's an ordinance that probably should be looked at and revised at some point. And I know you're not the only one. That is. Hooked to city sewer and not city water. There's several of those residences around town.
And so there are other promising projects, like um additional wells to replace our hundred-year-old well at the. Water Works building, uh replacing the water tank set on the hill because they're seventy years old.
So the, the north tank was put in in sixteen and the south tank was put in in fourteen or fourteen.
Oh, they're all concrete, okay. Or what's the, what's the reason for?
Yeah, there's. Um I haven't turned off the, the bigger tank just because. As our transducer in it that shows me the tank levels at all time. But the older tank is leaking an inch an hour, which is about fifteen thousand gallons an hour. And that's just the one tank. It's two hundred fifty thousand gallons and we don't fill it all the way full. Just for those reasons, we can tell on our data where the cracks are at on a, on a graph. We've. Looked at that extensively, just kind of messing with things and turning stuff on and off. Um to my knowledge, I read through some minutes, uh ten years after the other tank was put in, they were fixing leaks in it.
Where's, where's the new tank?
Uh it's basically right in front of the other two.
In front to the west, you mean?
Yeah.
It's gonna be covered?
Yep, eight hundred and ten thousand gallons.
And then the other part of the problem is this, this is only the second water rate increase we've had in over twenty years. And so we have, we've been saving up money for those many years. Getting away with cheap water and service, we said we're making up for that now. We wouldn't have a thirteen dollar increase right now if we would have increased it small amounts over the last twenty some odd years. So we're, we're kind of making up for that now.
I don't know how long ago or what else in my bill. I didn't, I thought it was just water only, but. There was an increase on mine because I got penalties because I paid automatic out of my account, just goes out every month. And then there was an increase. Didn't even know.
Have you spoke to these guys about that?
Yeah, and he, he took care of. I don't, I don't think I got the money back, the penalty. He might have taken the penalty off, I don't remember, but. Yeah, I, I fixed it by paying more, but. There was some kind of increase not that long ago.
We did have one, I think it was three years ago as we were starting. And garbage and water increases three, about three years ago when we started these projects.
When I asked about it, it was water. That's what I was pissed about. Anything I use, but I just don't see paying for something, I don't do it. Where did you come up with, or whatever came up with Bryce for the ballboard? I can read holes, it's twenty-five cents for seventy-five gallons. Um why would it go up? What have you been trying to know?
We just put in a new system that was six grand and the folks that. So basically the folks that are using our system, you're paying for and you're basically. So people out of county are coming here utilizing our water.
Well, that's, that's a good thing for us.
So, so that I wanted, I wanted you guys to. You know, see the benefits that, yes, we're gonna update this for the benefits of people that don't have water out of county, but. You know, Dutton, they're, they're twenty-five bucks a thousand. And their water's brown when it comes out of the, I mean legitimately, you can't drink it. Um. So I thought I, that was one other thing. We were running on a coin machine for. I don't even know how long, before my time probably. Um and so we updated to a credit card cash coin machine and it. It was expensive and we have some dues to run the credit card and all that and.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion, sorry, just call for the vote.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the vote on resolution number nine forty-one, the water system revenue bond for the two million five hundred thousand. Want to give us a little background on that song?
So uh that is a loan to help pay for this, these front projects going on. Um which is only a portion of the total project, as as you explained, um we got a lot of grants. And then loans forgiveness from um the ARPA funds. And set, which is the Montana Coal Endowment Program. You know, the, the rural development. A big portion of it is paid, but we do have a two and a half million dollar portion that we will have to get a loan for. And which is why the rates are going up. And as for the current project this summer, uh one B and two, which is additional water lines, the water tank. The new wells. And connecting wells to the water system.
Any other comments on anyone that doesn't want to flush their toilet or take shower tomorrow?
I was just gonna ask, have we addressed? The state's requirement of the waters that we're gonna have to break, all those lines are gonna have to replace underneath eighty-seven? Has that been, is that in this plan at all? Holy cow, how much is that gonna be?
We don't know.
Fifteen million?
We don't know, we don't know. Hopefully this will be additional loans and grants.
We were hoping to get it out for engineering by twenty to twenty-eight, um but with the. With everything right now, I mean, we're definitely new highway going out towards Fairfield this year and they postponed that project, so.
Oh, they did?
They did.
Okay.
Um so I don't know, we were hoping to get it all done at the same time, instead of them coming through ripping up the asphalt. Fixing it and then say, oh, you can't give us a twenty-year guarantee on your utilities. Now we have to tear it up again. But new infrastructure underneath. So we're hoping to coordinate that all at the same time, but. It's a huge, I mean, just me thinking of it, I, I would say that would be a couple of year project because that's gonna include. All utilities, I mean, we got storm drains that cross, we have sewer lines that cross, we have. Lot of any line, uh street lights, curb gutter. We'd like to put in a storm drain on Main if. Everybody noticed today, we don't have a single storm drain on Main Street, so that's, it's a huge project and a. It's kind of a reason that's taken forty years to haven't gotten that fruition. But hopefully, we can get something rolling on that. Collette was pretty optimistic that she could get it, something out. A plan out to funding. To at least get an idea of what we're looking at, you know, get a rough understanding of what it's gonna take and how many years and how many.
Makes two million sound like a really small amount.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve of resolution nine forty-one for the revenue bond for two point five million.
It's been moved and seconded for the water system revenue bond. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the vote on resolution number nine forty-two for the water system revenue bond for three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Basically the same thing, just the different funding agencies.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering why they had to be separated out. Yep, yep, okay.
Do you have a motion? It's been moved by Polly, seconded by Josh. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Item number five on our agenda is the vote on the June twenty twenty-five sheriff invoice. Josh, you have a copy. Do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions? Discussion.
I move we pay the June bill.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the June twenty twenty-five sheriff invoice. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Claims. I don't think there was anything out of the ordinary on the claims. Does anybody have any questions?
There's two, yeah.
I did, I'm already pressing your June bill with the wrong amount last. So I canceled it and then put it into the June claims again.
Okay.
Correct amount.
That's a three sign. Oh, we have, there's two, there's two separate claims.
Yeah.
We only voted on like half of them last time.
We separated it out. We voted on June and then July as a second motion.
Okay, so we need to do, okay, yeah. Um I move to pay the June claims.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the June claims. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried for the June claims. Let me have one for the July.
Move to pay the July claims.
It's been moved by Heather and seconded by Josh to pay the July claims. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
And so just to note, the sheriff's invoice is not in that June total, so we'll be adding that to that total.
And last but not least, on our new business tonight, we have the resignation of our finance officer. Interviews for Tom's position will take place after the July eighteenth application deadline. Which is, yep, Friday. Tom's last day will be July thirty-first and he will be sorely missed. You have a speech prepared, Tom?
Actually, we don't. It's just a position that came up, but I can't pass up, so.
Do I need a motion? To accept Tom's resignation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Tom Brown Felder as a finance officer for the city of Shoto. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carried. So the next items on our agenda are reports. First one, law enforcement. Second one is city judge. If anyone has any questions or any comments as we go through these. City attorney. Public Works Director. Heard a lot from you tonight, Colin. What else you got for us?
Nothing much. Um we're down to twenty-one percent on our water loss this month, or last month. That was great. Um fixed a few water leaks, uh we're in compliance for bad tees, water. Sewer plants in compliance, uh. Our continues on. Uh that being said, we did look into getting a new garbage truck. Um it's twelve or thirteen meters right now. Every light on the dash is on. Yeah, um so we're looking into that. Um I got some quotes. Uh but I feel is imperative that we replace it sooner than later with winter coming up and. We have a ninety to a hundred and twenty, ninety to a hundred and twenty day lead time on that truck. So the truck and chassis will have to be shipped off, put the bed on, weed works best for us, and we'll ship, ship it back to us. So that, that's new in garbage. Open to get that. Our result, we did have some funds that we've been reserving for that, that we probably still have to get a small loan.
Um depreciation fund set aside for our truck, but it will cover the whole cost. So we may have to get a intercap loan. Or a loan of some kind to pay for any portion.
Uh two hundred and seventy thousand.
Colin and I spoke about that earlier today. That garbage truck runs eight hours a day, four days a week. And how many yards?
Conditions, I mean, we just, and the biggest problem with the trucks today is that we're not. We have no highway miles on that truck. They're basically hours. It's just sitting there idling.
What do you got, thirty thousand?
Uh I think it's like seventy or eighty thousand miles on it, but it's hours.
Hours.
Oh, I don't know how many. But I mean, it's, it's uh. Yeah, it's probably due and then we can, you, we won't get rid of that truck. We will use that as our backup truck for branches. And also have a backup if anything else happens with the new truck. Uh just because it's new doesn't mean it's good. I understand that, but. Uh we did look, I think the truck that is our branch truck, they purchased that at one point. And within like a month, they had to put a new engine in it. So I think if we buy a truck that has a two-year warranty. Would probably would give us a little time to, you know, they would cover that if it did need a new engine versus buy a used truck and. Blow the engine up within thirty days and that'd be another expense, so. Certainly an option we can look into. I did contact Conrad Cup Bank. And all them folks up there, they rotate their trucks every five years. So we did really well. They were actually surprised if we're still running on it. Truck that's fifteen years old. Um so uh other than that, we've been really busy with streets, lots of grinding. Lot of things going on with that. Uh cardboard baler's been busy. Uh. We, I attended an M J R D D uh meeting a few months ago. They've been talking about upping the rates. For cardboard, for communities that are bringing cardboard to the landfill, and I think Teton County and Shoto are gonna be exempt from that. Because we can historically show that we have our own recycling center and our own baler. And the tonnage and all that has been submitted to that board, which I'm now part of, and they said. We're looking a lot better in these different communities because we do do our own, and the guys bail the bales. We, we do all the work versus.
Yeah.
Hiring an extra person and all that stuff, so we take care of that. And the. It's actually been working really well, the community, you know, they're being awesome about it. Clean up after it and some, some days are not so good, but actually for the majority, it's been good. Parks continue, um still loan. Now that's all on my report.
Appreciate it. Finance officer, do you have anything?
Uh just a couple of quick things. Hopefully wrapping up Ju- uh June's claim, then we last minute can come through. That are dated or services in June, I still have the process. Tomorrow, I'm working on the budget, initial budget numbers. Just getting that going. We won't have our mills set completely until sometime in August. So but we'll just get this initial budget going. We will. We usually have meetings on that in, I think, end of August, I guess, at September. We usually have meetings on that and I think end of August, I guess, at Pepper. Almost done with household three five five projects. We have the mini part two and then they just finished the city shop. Upgrades. That's, that's kind of exciting that that is almost done. I think they're like up.
Mayor and the council, Josh, you got anything?
Not anything pressing currently.
Heather? I thought um people were pretty respectful of the fireworks. Um window and I noticed it like shut off at midnight, which is a surprise. I was like, that was great. Is there like a a cone of silence that went over the neighborhood? Like it was, I was shocked. I was pleasantly surprised, so. I feel like the window we created was consistent and for the most part, people followed it. So I was, that was pleasant.
Yeah, I thought the Fourth of July um. Celebration was. Nicely contained that in that, in the thirteen hours that they could do it. For four days.
I think too, just because of the way it fell in the weekend, people got tired. God, there was so much going on in the park and downtown and Kegahki and the Legion and all the other entities. There was just a lot like. Going on, so good.
I mostly tidied up after themselves, like sometimes, some years are trashier than others, but I felt the neighborhood was tidy.
Anybody else got anything? We see that on the building and zoning permits, there was ten new permits. For the month of June, that's good. V fences, sheds. The canthas fire repair. So that's all good. I'm part of the sidewalk and tree board and we had a DNRC representative here this morning for our sidewalk and tree board meeting. She was very impressed that we are, in reality, what we appear to be on paper, we just received another grant not that long ago and. They're helping us update our tree inventory. So Circle B continues to work eagerly around town to. Remove dead and dying trees that have been identified with our tree inventory.
And Rocky Mountain.
And Rocky Mountain Tree Service as well. We've been planting trees at a pretty good rate as well. Has our tree planting rate been about the same or better? I can't remember.
Oh, now we try to plant.
What are you guys putting in?
Uh I heard a whole pot row, not real, a lot of lindens and.
You know, narrow.
They did an Ohio Buckeye and.
What was that?
The either narrowleaf popper or um. Uh arrowhead or arrowly plant. Those two are really dense. They're really fast grew, they're really, they're cottons.
Sure.
They're damned a tree.
Yeah, write those down and present it.
Well, you know, we were gonna have a talk the other day.
Yep.
Those trees were put in three years. And they're fifty feet now.
Yeah.
So they're, they're.
Yeah.
With that, if there's no other public comment? Do we have any others' public comment? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Maybe you don't.